All right, we'll, um, we'll pass that, so we'll get the meeting started. I'll start with the roll call.
Okay, Mayor Menney?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Monahan?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
And Brennaman is absent without notice. I haven't heard anything yet.
All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion by Monahan, second by Nelson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion approved the minutes from twelve four to thousand eight key.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
All right, next we have a motion to approve bill seven to ten.
So moved, second.
Discussion?
I only have one question, Craig. I see from time to time we have tools that are listed on the bill report.
Okay.
Do those tools get inventory?
Um, depends on what, I mean, what size tool, whatever, like our impacts and all the ones that are a little more expensive all around the inventory.
Okay, so the only reason, because right, it's a hundred and four dollars for tools, street department now. It just says, it just says tools for street department. I have no idea if that's a socket set. I don't, I have no idea what that is.
I'd have to look at the bill too. I know I want a, um, a tool to take off that clutch fan on your vehicle. That was like fifty some dollars.
Yeah, and I remember seeing those when you did work on Chevy. That's what, I was just curious whether they get inventory or not. Because if they don't get inventory, I can see that being problematic.
I can't remember if we've got the small stuff.
A little small, like I don't know how it all, you don't, but we do do the end of the year inventory for, except a saw or something a little more expensive. Anything over five hundred goes on our fixed asset inventory though right away, so Craig keeps the list. And at the end of the year, we, we do an inventory that we give to our orders and he keeps a list of that on his computer and updates it every year, but you probably don't, he tracks them monthly.
Small sockets, that's not a, that's, I don't think they have any list, you know, besides what we got for bills.
Uh, and the, the sheens for the bath house?
We purchased them out of this year's budgets. There's extra money in the budget. We had a plan for doing them next year.
Did we pick them up or do they just kind of hold them?
They'll hold them for us.
They'll hold them, okay.
Yeah, they've been purchased. They're down there.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't help you anywhere.
Lot of times at the end of budget, end of the year, you will, if we've got extra in certain budgets, we'll purchase for next year.
Till you get more next year.
Purchase for next year. Trying to, trying to save some money before it goes up in inflation.
That's all I was hearing.
Did you really say that?
Just because we're having fun with the budgets and the bills, propane for heating the shop, did you really need that?
Well, we, our wood burner wasn't working the best that day, so.
It's been pretty warm out, okay, I won't let it go.
Actually, it was, uh, if there's propane, it's probably from our first, did quit in our shop.
Did really?
We were under difficult for about two days, two days in there.
We felt a little palm tang.
Yeah, so it did get a little, it did get a little chilly in there.
We had to run it there for a couple of weeks and now the last couple of weeks, it's like, it's been pretty darn nice.
That's why there's propane always or normally wouldn't be propane, so.
So would you replace the heater in the shop?
It was under warranty, semi warranty, kind of upgraded, so like five hundred dollars. They had to send it in to make sure that everything was kosher with it. So we've got replaced. That'll probably be on next, I don't know if it's on this bill or not.
Any other questions on bills?
Nine trees, was that they all in the park or where were they?
Did I see, or did I miss something?
Oh, was that, that was on the oval, yeah.
Were those in the park?
Um, several boulevards, there's, uh, four or five in the park.
Five in the park.
The rest of boulevard trees.
I was not questioning the bill, I was more questioning where the trees were.
Yeah, there's two on Fighter, one on Oaks, or no, one on, uh, A Street. And one on Main for boulevards.
Rest of the top, left side of the pool.
Where are they at, where are they?
Two are by the pool, two big ones over south of the pool.
Yeah.
And one right on the west side of the park, two over where they have the heater.
All right, we have a meeting. All right, we'll vote, Johnson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
All right, public comments. Do we have anybody in the public that has any thoughts on agenda items? Second. Move on. Orders, resolutions, applications, and hearings. We got a bunch of second readings and we're gonna start with the first reading. That first one, Teresa's got a packet under per notes of what this all is, so that's the amended zoning regulations for accessory buildings. Do we have a motion for first reading on this one? Or do you have questions for Teresa on what this means?
Question to approve first reading ordinance number six fifty-six.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, questions, discussion?
Setback distance to ten feet for accessory buildings. Now, setback is or was seven, right?
No. So, the changes to these, planning and zoning board reviewed this and their concerns were mostly with the larger accessory buildings. We had a couple put up this last summer that were quite big. Our regulations now state that you could go up to twelve hundred square feet or thirty percent of your rear yard, whichever is less. So, you know, if you have a yard big enough, you could do a twelve hundred square foot building. A lot of yards aren't, but, um, they decided they would like to maybe see that go down to a thousand square feet. And then the setback, right now, um, our regulations are five feet from the property line, which they think that's okay for the smaller building, so if it's a hundred and twenty square feet or less, they'll keep it at that five foot. But then, once again, they thought with the larger buildings, we maybe want to increase that, just if you've got a large building right next to your neighbor, it'd give that more distance between that building and your neighbor. So they wanted to increase that to ten feet. So those are basically the two big changes to accessory buildings, is come down a little bit on the maximum square footage and then change your setback.
What am I confused with, with a seven foot?
It used to be seven foot about five years ago, but the last revision, there were some regulations.
Are you kidding me? I'm still looking back five years ago? Wow.
And it, and for, to build a house, it is seven foot.
Okay.
That's probably what you're saying. That has stayed the same, yeah. But these are accessory buildings.
Okay, all right.
Accessory buildings, accessory buildings used to be three.
Three, I could say, about two revisions ago, it used to be three, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
At least I wasn't totally nuts on that.
But right now, we're at five foot and like I said, they've, they've been at for the smaller ones, five foot, but they recommend changing to ten for the larger ones.
So just for the sake of discussion, why, why do we keep tightening and limiting accessory buildings?
Like I said, I, we had kind of two larger ones come in over this past year and.
But, but that's what I get, so why?
They had some neighbor complaints, so I think that's what they love.
But the neighbor doesn't own the pro, the property.
Right, no.
So that's what I don't get, just because they're larger. I, I'm a, I'm a huge proponent of accessory buildings. The bigger and the closer the property line, the better.
See, I think you're by yourself on that one. Maybe not by yourself, but I think you're a minority there, because I think most of the complaints that would come in would say, hey, they have to be a certain size for that property and they have to be a little bit wider than the property line.
Yeah, but if you, if you have room, if you have room, if you can meet setbacks, give them more opportunity.
I think our current plan is only continually try to zone ugly, what is deemed as ugly or inappropriate, and we're just trying to finesse those ordinances to.
Tighten them up.
Finesse, tighten them up.
I don't know what's going to happen.
That's why I'm here, I'm just telling you, P and Z, if you guys have questions.
Tony, if you want me to hear that, I don't hear a word you're saying.
Come on, I think you've got something to him.
I don't, you guys go ahead. I'm just, I'm here, I'm here, Mr. Chairman, P and Z, if you guys have any questions or concerns, you'd like to speak out from the board, I'd be happy to, otherwise.
Certainly, take the podium and I'll ask you the same question, why are we tightening it up? And I, and I don't want, this is the answer I don't want, because Harrisburg, Teed, Lennox, Brandon and Karen.
I'm not gonna give you that answer, all right. Um, we've had numerous situations with accessory buildings, with the size of the accessory building and the closeness to a lot line. The, it's been expressed by property owners, surrounding neighbors, that there's a bit of a hardship caused by that building. So, an example, I put up a large accessory building. They typically always go to the back end of the lot and if it's close to the back end of the lot, I'm a gardener and I garden, and that building's to the west of my garden or south of my garden, it throws shade on my yard. And either causes problems with the yard or causes problems with growing grass. So the shade from that building being so close can cause problems for the neighbor's property. When the house, when that person built their house and this house was built there, there wasn't a problem. Because the building gets put in, it can cause a problem onto that neighboring property owner's property. So by limiting the size and moving the setback, you can keep that building from casting shade or causing problems over that neighbor's property. That's one situation. The other, the other situation brought up in one, in one that we had, and the property owner actually came in asking for a variance to go bigger than twelve hundred square feet because he had enough backyard. It's a corner lot, it would go in his backyard, but his backyard is the neighbor's side yard. So the neighbors now are looking out their front window at the corner of this big accessory building in the backyard. So again, by moving setbacks and limiting the size of the building, you shrink that up and that caused the hardship to the neighbor next door.
How could you put an accessory building on a corner lot that extended past the front of the neighboring house?
Because this is, this and the side yard setback here compared to the front setback going this way.
But a corner lot, you still have to stay whatever it is, twenty or twenty-five foot on both sides on a corner lot.
Um, the, the situation here, they can look out, they look out the front of their house and basically see the point of the, so the accessory building is out there. And they, they came for a variance, Matta Keys, and they were looking to build, it was almost sixteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, that's the original one.
It was the original variance and we denied the variance and so the property owner came back in and built to eleven hundred and ninety-nine square feet. And this, this particular property, I mean, it's a nice looking building, but when you drive through that neighborhood, it doesn't look right, yes. Exactly.
If you know.
So, I mean, that's, that's from, from input that we had in meetings when we had these situations come up. It's input that we heard from citizens and as a board, we talked about it and said, we wanted to incorporate that feedback that we heard from the citizens at that time. And change the zoning rules hopefully cut down any hardships or.
But the one on St. Street's not even closer to the sidewalk than the House of East is. That's not even closer to the property.
It's right on.
It's gotta be in line with it.
Probably right in line.
So how do you look out your front window and see something to your left, but to the right of you?
Because the house is here and that garage is setback, so we'll look out the window of the house here, looking right in the side of that accessory building. I shouldn't say front window, I believe it's a side window that they look out of, that they stare in the side of the building. That's my error there. But that's, I mean, where this whole discussion came about, when we had numerous occasions over the last year, when we're going through the zoning rules, we said, from what we've heard in meetings and the public being up here, we think this is a good change to make. Any other questions? Okay, and I'm here for the next three, two, so.
All right, we got motion to second. A vote, Monahan?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel? Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
I'm the councilperson that did that all the time. Yes.
Yes.
All right, we got second reading, that one will come back up here in our next meeting, so. All right, we got second reading of six fifty-five, which many of you reviewed last meeting, amended zoning definitions. Anybody need a re-read of that or anything there?
I think a motion to approve ordinance six fifty-seven, second reading.
Do it, second?
Second.
Discussion? None? Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel? Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yes.
Second reading, ordinance six fifty-seven. Change of use permits.
I think a motion to approve ordinance six fifty-seven, second reading.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Questions? Anybody need to hear pieces of that one?
So this is just for change of use?
This would add a whole new section in our zoning regulations that basically clarifies the process for the change of use.
Okay.
Um, remember we had a building that had a duty to use and we didn't really have it clearly defined in regulations, we had to take kind of bits and pieces. This kind of clearly defines, you need to come get an application, you need to meet this regulation, here's what you need to submit and kind of clarifies the process more or less.
Sorry, I figured that's why it was, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, there's another discussion, a vote? Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
And second reading, ordinance six sixty-three, the sub-amount appropriation.
Second.
Second. Discussion, no changes in this one from last time, all of this is.
The, the only thing that changed is the funding sources for the Mickelson Road. We had another payout come through, so I had to bump those from what we're taking from like general and water and sewer, but the expenses all stayed the same. And so I bumped the revenues up and just took that away from the loan proceeds. Yep. Like I said, expenses all stayed the same.
All right, discussion? Vote, Keel?
Yes.
Johnson? Nelson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
And Monahan?
Yeah.
All right, now we got resolution two thousand eighteen dash nine, which is the contingency fund transfer.
This one is new. Um, when I did a final review after paying all the bills in December, Karen submitted, we were gonna, the only account we're gonna run short in is the finance office. I kind of looked to see, we're running in the negative. And I noticed in our insurance and drug testing account item, we are running negative. Um, I looked it up, everything's coded right, it's just, you know, insurance went up, our drug testing fees went up with Stanford, they're charging more for the CDL one, so it's just, we didn't budget enough, basically is what it comes down to. And this will come on with our contingency money that's already budgeted, just transferred from the contingency line item to this line item.
Hope to approve resolution, uh, two eighteen dash nine, contingency fund transfer.
All right.
Okay, discussion? And then, Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll move to the other section. Got, uh, Matt Evans, what complex is that?
Thanks. Um, let's see, our last, our December meeting, um, of the Hartford Area Sports and Rec, uh, committee, we spent the majority of it reviewing our previous sponsorship packet as well as other, um, area sponsorship packets that they have used. And tried to come up with at least a start of revamping our current. Uh, the first thing we did, there, we decided to kind of split it into two different categories, a sponsorship category, um, as well as advertising. So the sponsorship category, um, we broke it down into nine different levels. We looked at our, the first packet that was put together when, um, this all started and realized that the numbers that we had were probably a little too high for our community. Um, and we didn't have enough variance to give people, um, an opportunity to kind of fit in. Sorry, I don't have those before. I sent an email shortly before the meeting, so you guys will have that for after, um, that shows the different levels we start at. And these would be shown too, when we get a restroom building, that type of thing, that we would, uh, put up our sponsorship area on the side of one of the buildings. Our first several levels would, you know, have just a basic plaque and, um, our second and third levels would have larger, larger logos, um, or their names printed a little bit, um, bigger. In the meantime, until we would get that put up, uh, we would add those, um, onto our Facebook page, um, to keep kind of a scrolling, I think, as far as thank yous to all those that have, um, have donated. So the, uh, our first starting level, we start out basically, um, with a hundred dollars to four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. You know, I mean, I can break it down to go all the way up to over a hundred thousand dollars, um, just in case, you know, we get a larger, um, company that's willing to, or someone that's willing to donate. But we break them down into increments, the first couple by, uh, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, hundred to four ninety-nine, five hundred to nine ninety-nine. Then we jump up, um, a thousand dollars to, uh, two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine, um, up after that to five thousand, then five thousand to ten thousand, ten thousand, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And then up, so we feel that that just gives, you know, you know, whether it's just a family that wants to donate a hundred, um, that type of thing, all the way up to, to business and find a place for, for everybody within that range. As far as the advertising, uh, piece, then we decided that, then those would go on scoreboards, uh, banners, those type of things, but that, that'll be worked on at, at a later meeting.
I gotta ask, why don't you just put it between a hundred and twenty-four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the one inch tags and between twenty-five hundred and nine hundred and ninety-nine, or ninety-nine, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine? You know, I don't understand all the different breakouts when they're essentially the same, you know, the same.
Right, I think just the people at the meeting when we were deciding that, uh, that, that those were, you know, if we were to break it down into different areas, but like I said, this is kind of a beginning piece, so it's not the end all be all. But at that time, that's what, I think people thought they'd like to see that, you know, if you're donating above that, uh, you know, twenty-five hundred dollar level, that you might want to see your name a little bit bigger, that type of thing.
I looked at the ten thousand dollar donor and the nine hundred, the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar donor, and they get the same tag.
Yeah, that's, uh, so.
Definitely. I, I think it's moving in the right direction, but, um, it's moving in the right direction.
Um, and then, like I mentioned, as far as advertising, we'll be moving on that later and putting together, um, after hearing a little bit more and working with Mr. Nelson and getting some information on the best way to, uh, to go about that, once we get, you know, leases set up, that type of thing. Uh, the other thing that we, um, discussed that, you know, we'll kind of bring forward to the council in the future, just be as we're looking to expand and, you know, looking at our next project or hopefully being a, you know, restroom concession building. Looking at the possibilities of, um, or starting the discussion, I guess, of being able to use donated labor and/or materials. In the past, we've had opportunities with, um, you know, donated material as well as donated time by even licensed contractors, you know, that are in the, the community. Our thought is that, you know, as things, they need to be approved, um, so we would hope that we would be able to have a little leeway, we hope that that would reduce the costs in those projects.
What would be some of the tasks that volunteers would do?
I think under the, depending on the size of the project, I guess, um, you know, Travis, I don't know, you might be able to help me out, as far as when we're building a, I'm not a construction guy, but, you know, I, I think someone had mentioned that under the direction of a contractor, um, you know, there would be certain things that they'd be able to, whether it's putting up, uh, drywall or, you know, I don't know exactly. So that we'd have to bring it to someone else, I'm not familiar with that, but whatever we could, so. I think the other thing was some fencing in the past, those type of things, when you start that project.
That was the example that was presented to me and that was the fencing of, um, the thing that that department is missing, that the community is missing, is who holds those volunteers accountable? And it's no disrespect to you or your group, but when you struggle to get a quorum for a meeting, there's no, you, you know, you, that, that volunteerism appears to be lacking. And so that was my point back to that individual, was I think volunteers great, I think if you're gonna count on it, um, we may, we may end up short and then who holds those volunteers accountable, who makes sure that the standard is met? That those things, those, that the money's being put into for the community for the long haul, um, is to spend, so to speak.
But I think we would make sure that that would be approved through you guys as far as the, you know, you would see the plans, you know, have discussion as far as who we would have, as far as the main contractor that would be, and going from there. And I think as far as volunteering, I think there are more people that are willing to volunteer to do things rather than sit at a meeting. I think, uh, you know, if we said this Saturday, we're gonna, you know, knock this out and for a specific thing, we'd have, I think, a pretty good turnout in this community. I agree that, you know, as far as the meeting piece, getting people to, to show up to our meetings and that, uh, that is, that is difficult. But I think the hands on, get it done type thing, we'd see pretty good numbers.
So, um, like you said, depending on the project, I, I could be wrong, but is there like a liability thing you would have to consider too? I mean, just a bunch of people doing some projects and what if somebody gets hurt and, you know?
Yeah, I guess.
We do have some issues with the insurance company, like we can't let volunteers come into the park, our insurance company won't allow that because, as you pointed out, some liability issues. So we definitely would want to consult with them before, we would have anybody out there doing any kind of work, you know?
Well, these are good things to bring up, I mean, I think, I think we definitely appreciate kind of the heads up on it, and I would say as the best course of action would be to, you know, as you're firming up this, for instance, this sponsorship levels. you know, as you're firming up this, for instance, this sponsorship levels, you know, working with Mike Jones and Keel and say, okay, are we ready to bring this as an agenda item, so the council can make a decision on it? And then, then the other piece, okay, if we're looking at volunteers or donated materials and labor and some of those kind of things, let's get this thing kind of ironed out ahead of time and then have it ready to put on the agenda and go there.
Because it's really almost like, it's almost like leasing is a work spot, it's all in-kind, it's in-kind gift from a company. I think as we meet next time, that's why I was, guess I was thinking, listening to this comment, next time we meet, Larry, I think that's something we need to talk about. As we're developing this document, we might as well make sure we cover some of that, some of that ground.
If there's a waiver form that, or whatever you can draft that, you know, eliminates that liability concern.
And isn't there typically an issue when it's a city-built project that Stockwell or engineers have to have some sort of a sign-off on this deal, is that right Mitch?
Yeah, in the past, at the fencing project, we put the plans together and then the volunteers decided what part they wanted to do.
So, there's a few, there's a few balls in the area on this one, Matt, I think we gotta get covered before we're ready to.
Well, that's what I just kind of brought in. Yeah, to start the conversation.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did, I'm glad you did, I'm just, that was my thought as we were, as I was listening.
Yep, I agree.
That's good, great, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
Move to reports. Two Schumacher here, fire department report.
Good evening, Mayor.
Counselors. Recap activities for November. Had twenty-three total calls, twelve of them in Hartford here. A little slowdown on calls, always positive. November training side fire, we were down at Sioux Falls Fire Training Center, working on the SCBA confidence course. EMS side November, we were doing practical skill, skill stations for medical emergencies. December, we're gonna be training on ice rescue training. EMS, we had a CPR training last night, so it's really all we have going on right now.
Questions?
Boys were going somewhere last night for a training, seeing one of the trucks pulling out.
Well, that was probably.
They were just driving around. Hit pizza or something?
Could be. I know we had.
I was, I was, I'm curious, I see that, you know.
We had about half the department in there for a four-hour training last night, so.
So it was basically official.
All right. Thanks, Frank. I think what we're gonna do, I'm gonna go through a few of these other reports and we're gonna end the year report. You all right with that, Jesse?
Absolutely.
So, let's go to city engineer report, looks like we've got an action in there as well.
Yep, I didn't really have much to update you on the report states already. Theresa did give me some things to follow up on, working through those with the contractor and getting those addressed. But yeah, the action item we had is the force accounting agreement for next year. I just wanted to go through that quickly with T-Force. We have a new packet there. Did update some language items from what you had in the past, and we actually updated that with our clients. We'll see if that in the economics section of the agreement, and really that's putting on favor kind of what we've always agreed in the past. You know, as, as your city engineer, we don't engage in any improvements without, you know, your consent. If there's a developer or anything like that that approaches us to, to work on their projects, we turn them down, you know, because we feel that's a conflict of interest. And so we've always, we're just putting that in writing here. We also have just, you know, separate contracts, CIP contracts, would be contracted separately from the sub-agreement. You know, this force accounting agreement is really just for the daily ass process and things of that sort. So any other contracts would be contracted separately from this, and then we go on to just give a description of the services that we provide and what those contract contracts might end up being. The scope of services section is pretty much the same as what it's always been, and that's where it goes on the list. The miscellaneous things that we do on a daily basis for you, being plan reviews, cost estimates, small surveys, things of that sort that just, that just pop up. And it goes on to the next page, lists our hourly rates. We did have a three-point-nine percent increase in our hourly rates, and that's largely just to help retain our employees, we have had some issues with, you know, some people losing weight, we told them to make some adjustments to salaries, and also had to do with insurance increases.
Thank you, answer any questions?
You know, Theresa, what was our total force account spent this year?
I don't remember, what did we budget, like twenty thousand or something like that?
I wanna say it was fifty.
For the force account?
Yeah, just last year.
Oh, we had this.
Budgeted twenty, spent fifty?
Probably fifty and went over twenty.
Oh, that's usually. For you guys, we're usually, honestly, around forty, I thought.
Or Van Mar.
Fifteen for land, so.
Forty-five. We had fifteen thousand budgeted for, on top of that, for land, assisting with the land acquisition for the wastewater plants.
So just for force, we've spent forty-five?
I'll trade budget, let's tell you what we spent here. New packet plan, so we, we, fifty-four.
We've spent fifty-four, and we budgeted.
We budgeted sixty, so it's the forty plus the fifteen thousand for the land acquisition for the wastewater plant, so we budgeted sixty, we had fifty-four thousand, almost five thousand this year.
This was a big year, than you probably had in the past, I wouldn't say usually around forty, forty-five, so this was a larger year for you guys. And I think it was just, there's probably just more plan reviews this year, that's usually what picks up most of the, most of the fee.
So did we take, did we know that they were going up three-point-nine and we budgeted for next year? Good thing to know. This year, you know.
At budget time, they always will kind of give us a estimate of what the force account would be, but.
Did you estimate this year what we were gonna go up?
Well, we trended, you know, we knew that we were trending high on this year when we had budget time, so I'm, I don't remember what we recommended, but I'm guessing we probably recommended around forty-five or fifty for next year.
Questions?
Remember, it's more money, more problems. More money, more problems.
Coach approved the two thousand nineteen forced account engineering agreement.
Discussion. I already answered my questions.
You know what I mean, I mean, every time there's a problem, well, we need to call Stockwell because, well, look what we're paying them. And then we pay them more because we call them. That's not too edgy.
All right, well, Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
On hand?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Anything else on, on the engineer report?
No, thank you.
All right, move on to Craig, superintendent, you have pretty much everything laid on your report, we do have an action in the first, give load.
The only thing I wanted to add is, we did have a blowword go down to the news today. I got one coming for it, it's about thirty-two hundred dollars. There's another one that's making noise, we're gonna take that one out of service soon if we get the one in. New one should be on Thursday. We still have one blowword working out there right now, so as soon as we get, Thursday we get the other one in, we'll get that put in, then we're gonna take the other one and send it into Minneapolis to see Emery Nelson, I think it is, and then they'll go through it and figure about half raised the three dollars, so that's the only thing that we had come up today. Basically, I just showed you the numbers from what the pay loader came in at, what they sold it for and all that stuff, and then I got the, find out if Skidster, you want me to discuss that?
Sure.
Did you not want to look at anybody else, you just figured, you like the Gale, right?
Yeah, I'll be truthful, we didn't go into case. Neil and Jesse both drove a cat, and they said that the cat was so small, they had to back into it, they couldn't really get turned around and get into it, it was that tight on. So we've had Gale since nineteen ninety-five, and we've been running him ever since. You see the number that, what they're loan for trade in, that eighty-two-five, fifty, I guess. Back in two thousand eleven, we won our last one, and got trade number from them then, and they only, of course, gonna offer us four thousand for it, so it actually went up, over four thousand, just hanging on to it for a few years.
Make a bigger cat, call it the fat cat.
Let them guys know that.
We really were thinking about that, I was just looking at a cat. So I was like, that's a pretty big guy.
And we've priced them all in the past, and like I said, with, with Gale's government pricing, nobody'd even come close to it, it's just unreal.
That's a spoken price.
Yeah, even John here called me today, and he goes, if I even, I was trying to get traded value from him, and he finally did send me a dollar amount of six thousand dollars, and he, before he even sent it, he said, am I even in the ballpark? I said.
So in words, the eighty-two, eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars is over fair, and no reason we're looking at surplus like we did previous?
I did go online, I did a lot of research on units that's, that year, and actually less hours than ours on it, and they were bringing around that nine to ninety-five at the most. It's not worth paying the six percent, sell it and take a chance on getting that kind of money for it, I mean, I was shocked when he showed me that number.
Do you need a motion for this, sets his budget?
I'd like to have one, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the Gale pay loader for.
Skidster.
Skidster, excuse me. Small pay loader. How's that? For net of twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-five.
That what comes out to?
That's what it says right here.
The thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, two-twenty-five, less the traded of eighty-two fifty, gets us at twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-five.
Gotcha, second.
All right, we got a motion and second?
Can I ask a very special question?
Yeah.
You look like you had some concern on your face there when you made that motion, Craig, is that number not?
No, I was just double checking, I don't have readers, so I can't read.
Why don't you have Larry looking at it?
No, I was just double, double checking my numbers because I wanted to make sure I was right, but yeah, so it's thirty-eight for the, I'm looking at the actual quote here, thirty-eight, and then we wanted to do two-twenty-five for the, the extra sound reductive in it, and then minus eighty-two fifty, so.
That number's right?
Comes up right, I believe. I did it, at the office, it came up right, so.
Now's the time to check it. What'd you say in your motion?
Yeah, the twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-five.
That's a clue, that's adding in the two-twenty-five.
Yep.
What about that?
There's Dell's other add-ons, we don't need the high, high flow hydraulics for the stuff we've got, and then the camera, it's kind of a safety thing, but it's right in the way when you crawl into it, so we are, are gonna have mirrors in it inside so you can see behind it, which we don't even have on the other ones. The camera, we just figured was wasting money for, for the unit, so.
So for the three adders, you're only taking the two-twenty-five?
Yep.
So then our numbers are still right, am I right?
Your numbers right?
Whatever you can see. All of both?
All right, all of both. Jones?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
On hand?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any questions for him?
All right, Department's Officer report?
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add? Any questions on what Karen's got in her report? All right, and then Theresa's report, Superintendent's report?
Just want to go over the first thing I have under the non-gen items for my report. The planning zoning presented at our last meeting, off-street parking, and the council had some concerns about the sidewalk going through the driveways, so we did send it back to the planning zoning board, and they discussed it this last week. If you read through it, you know, like I said, the concern was, you know, when you put in a new driveway, you're supposed to include a port sidewalk. Well, there was concerns about how's that gonna work, you know, if you don't got the correct slope, or don't presently have sidewalks to it, or trees are in the way, or not enough right away, you know, there, there could be several issues throughout town, just because of the property, they're still diverse. So, the board did discuss it, and, you know, the way we read it is, you know, you need to have a port sidewalk if you put in a new driveway, so if you're building a new home, or if you're putting in a new accessory building that's never had one before, you put in that port sidewalk, because you're gonna be grading that anyway, so you should be able to get the grade. But they did add a line, and that's in blue that I put in your packet, is that, they added a line to that repairs or replacement of existing driveways are exempt from having to have the port sidewalk in the driveway. They think that maybe then that could, so if you have an existing driveway and you need to tear it out and replace it because of cracks or whatever, you wouldn't have to put in that sidewalk. You know, it'd be, you could, what you have now, you could replace it, just like it is, or repair it, you know, just like it is, so. And before, I wanted to just get, I don't need a motion, but I wanted to get the board's input on this, because since we're changing this, we'll have to go back and do a public hearing with P and Z before we go through that whole process, I just want an input from the council if, you know, you think that works or not, or if we think they should tweak it some more, what is your input, I guess?
So are we saying that you have to, so like I just did my driveway, I did not redo my sidewalk. With this ordinance, would I have to redo my sidewalk?
Were you repairing it?
I replaced my whole driveway.
So that's a replacement one, so with this new addition, you would not have to. Did you originally have the sidewalk given?
Are you talking about the sidewalk that runs through your driveway?
Yes, the sidewalk that's going through your driveway, not the sidewalk on either side.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And you replaced that?
I repaired my apron, I didn't replace my.
Oh, so yours, your sidewalk's already in there.
Really, really, all it is, is just taking the edger and making it look like a sidewalk.
Right, and then that's.
Yeah, you can.
And having a slope less than two percent.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, and this all kind of came about for that two percent slope.
Is that right? Apron is, a port driveway and sidewalk is thicker than the rest of your sidewalks.
There is that code? Anybody checked that? I doubt it.
I'm sure mine is that thing.
Well, I'm sure your computer.
For what you paid. I just dig all over the definition of new, existing. If I get something, if I replace something, if I put, if I need new tires, if I need different tires on my vehicle, those aren't existing tires, those are new tires. If I replace something and I put it in, it's new to me.
Yeah, but you're replacing existing things. You know, if you bought a car that didn't have wheels and tires, you would be buying new wheels and tires.
Point of clarification there.
Okay, now it makes sense. So what do you think we're finding, is she just looking to see if there's any holes in this?
I, I just want to, is there any concerns with this change, because, except, we'll have to go through the whole public hearing process again, and, you know, if you're not satisfied with this, or you have, you know, any questions or concerns with it, I'm gonna go back to the board and revamp.
Again, as I say, if I tear my driveway out and I pour cement there, all my neighbors are gonna say, hey, Travis got a new driveway.
You know, what we could do is we could talk with the, the board, and under our definitions, we could define what a new driveway is.
That was a point of clarification I was asking for, and it, it got kind of swept aside at the P and Z meeting. You guys don't have enough to do, you've had how many meetings canceled?
It would be the piece that the homeowner would argue, you know?
Yeah. Like I said, and that could probably be just cleared up with the definitions I looked up to, what do you consider new, what do you consider existing?
Are we, replacement?
Right, yeah.
Again, that's not all the concern with that, is the vergish.
Anybody else have any other concerns?
But if you get through it and you think about it and you've got more, let Tracy know between now and next time.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll discuss this at the next P and Z meeting, the first one in January then, and we'll look it over again then, so. Okay, um, and then in my packet, um, or in the packet, there was some information about the, the rib dinner with the legislator. Um, if you're interested in going, I mean, the mayor and Karen know about it. Unfortunately, this always hits a council meeting date, so if we have too many people that want to be gone, we'll have to look at rescheduling our council date or whatnot. But if, you know, well, we're gonna have one or two repriced to have it, but.
I'm gonna know.
So look at your schedules and let us know. I think we need to know by the twenty-second, was it? Yes, January, January twenty-second, so. Um, and then the other, we're just kind of updates for you. And then just a reminder, our next meeting is Wednesday, January second, because the first falls on Tuesdays and that's a holiday, so make sure you get, you have Wednesday the second. You have any other questions, Phil?
Thanks, Tricia. All right, move to Chamber of Commerce, Jesse? He's got a recap between the questions.
Yeah, first things first, can you look through my four meeting questions for me concerning that month in November?
I'm looking ahead to January.
Yeah.
Um, January ninth, speaking to Kiwanis Club on Hartford Development.
Yes.
What, uh, what's your pitch going in on that? What's, what's the, I used to be part of Kiwanis and I don't recall anything like that.
So they, they have speakers that come in for monthly, upper weekly meetings. And, uh, I, I spoke to the Swatoma is back in sometime this summer, of just about Hartford development and what we're doing out here. And, uh, found the experience very, very enjoyable and rewarding. And, uh, reached out to our local Kiwanis rep to see if I could speak at their.
They reached out to you?
Yeah. They reached out to me too. I mean, it was, it's the mayor's wife, it's Christie. She's the, there's the speakership for January. So just another way to get in front of people to talk about what's happening out here.
Do you have PowerPoint there too?
Nope, I just, I just talk.
Okay.
I have a, I have a little presentation that I've written down and I just kind of go over some highlights and get a history of Hartford, what's, what's changed, what started the development, where we're at, how things are going for the future.
Okay, good job.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? So we've had a really fun year, looking back since, uh, just, wow, twelve months. It's been crazy how fast time has gone. I was, uh, doing some, some research on Google today about Hartford, finding out what the world thinks of us. And it was cool to think or see, I'm gonna change time here, that's okay with you. I won't break this, but I promise, Tricia, I broke in two clocks. So we docked my pay. This was, uh, February fifteenth. We talked about the daycare shortage. We're still working on this project. It is a complex, uh, issue. But this is kind of our, the beginning, for me anyways, for our, our momentum, was daycare. It was a showcasing that we had a, a big issue and that was ever growing. And if you look at how far we've come in the last three years, this was the headline January twelfth at least of twenty sixteen. In two years, we've gotten from this to what I'm gonna show you very shortly today. We had Katie Alex here, please somebody come out, talk about how we're growing, but where the seniors moving to. We're talking about the demand for new housing, apartment twin homes and zero entry homes. We talked about our need for our education system. My central school district is growing and with the state formula, it needs more money. This, this passed big time, failed in twenty sixteen and passed overwhelmingly in twenty eighteen. Made our brewery, we programmed on in June, that we had a ton of press on. The Argus came out here for our groundbreaking for our sports complex. We had a nice feature in the paper and online. And they did a full feature in the business journal, front page, on how Hartford is growing, how we're dealing with growth, our better community status, and how we are facing our issues, especially given our past. We had news coverage on Mickelson Road Project. We had coverage on our brewery and as it started to take shape later on in the summer. And the focus was the community coming together and supporting this project and trusting one another. And this was a big one, and kettle cover, and Sioux Falls Business coverage. We also had some business manufacturing talked about in Sioux Falls dot business, where they take an innovative approach to empowering their employees, make them feel more like they're at home. And we had Sioux Falls Business feature, our groundbreakings, our restaurants, the ninety-no variety and salvage. And we had a feature, our partner approach to growth, working with our, our brothers and sisters and Brandon and Harrisburg and T and O'Apples and Sioux Falls, to build stronger relationships to make our communities grow better. And of course, there's something opening in the brewery itself. We had a lot of coverage. And if you look at some of these numbers, this is how many engagements that she had online, how many ships through Facebook for their own thing. And it was a big story. People really like here, apparently. I think y'all know that. And most recently, we had an announcement of racing, coming back to Hartford, South Dakota in twenty nineteen. I was showing some of the engagements online about this. On their Facebook page alone, they went from zero to two hundred likes in about a few, few days. They have forty-six thousand interactions, four thousand clicks on their links. It's, it's amazing to see the widespread reach this racetrack's gonna, it's gonna bring to our community. We have a forest coming in twenty nineteen. We had a river fountain today for a graphic designer and boutique and Modish, Modish Designs and Boutique. A lot of good things have happened this year, and this is obviously a press clip. This is a meet, try picking, uh, different stories. Of course, it is, there's some bad stories up there too, as they, as they all happen. Uh, but it's been relatively very good year for Hartford. We had our groundbreakings, starting out in June. We did a fun Mickelson Road Project. We did a fun Swenson Industrial Park and Sports Complex Project. We broke around a Naps Landing. We've cut ribbon for a carer sport, the newest tire factory in town. We've got ribbon on the mostly complete, uh, Mike Frank and Trail. We've got ribbon on the library, one of the, one of the most fun projects we've done this year was, and watching the community come up with that project every day, the kids, the elderly, the families. It's been very well-veached. One of my favorites of the year, of course, the actual formula to cut the ribbon. We went from groundbreaking in June to rebuilding November eighth. Pretty fantastic timing for this project. And now they had ten years on tap in a matter of less than forty-five days. Bright future ahead for Buffalo Brewery. We have a new substation that is, uh, and that has been mostly energized. We didn't ask for this. We didn't call them. We didn't tell them that we're growing, hey, we need to do this. They saw the potential for it and they invested big time in this infrastructure. So the steakhouse, they saw that their facility was a little bit behind the times, needed a little bit of a Facebook. If you haven't been there yet, they did a great job, uh, remodeling the facility, making it a little bit more friendly for twenty eighteen and they have plans to do more even in twenty nineteen. This was just a few hours ago, our newest business downtown, two years ago, Baron Wasteland. Today, energy, excitement, people coming down here from more than just a cell bar. It's been fun along the way. We had our, our Great Business in the Park event this year. Uh, we had, we had close up to people there. And then what we'll continue to do every year going forward, we'll also start third Thursdays in the parks. Uh, in twenty nineteen, the Chamber will have a band that will come into the amphitheater and play a few music for the community. We'll also see how members can engage with the community too, that means, you know, hooker floats or some sort of activity or game. We're still trying to figure those details out. But we, we have a very young population. We need to find ways to engage them. We had a little bit of fun in our first golf tournament too. We had, uh, twenty teams on our first year, went forward growing that number in twenty nineteen. We rebranded our Chamber of Commerce, the honest discover Hartford. We have a lot of positive engagement on our website, we have talked first with and discover Hartford. Our Facebook views and engagements were off the charts, get thirteen thousand video views, closer to fourteen thousand in the span of a month. People care. You just gotta get out there and you gotta engage them and interact with them. We launched the Burger Battle Challenge in January and it's already had a lot of traction online. We've had four thousand, close to four thousand engagements on the event alone. And we're gonna see, I mean, a lot of cool things happen out of this contest. We've rebranded our development foundation to more active reflects the future here, Hartford, which is more of a nonprofit economic development organization. And it's been a fun year. Any questions?
Um, notice we didn't have the month building included in that.
We talked about.
Nonofficial or what?
Well, we, we did, we did. I do have, uh, thinking about the flower shop.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that, that is in there, but as far as the coffee house goes and the, the event center, still waiting for a little more confirmation on those details before, I think those probably.
You know, I had, um, we had a mayor lunch last week with Paul Hankin, just had the area mayors together and had stock votes going on with communities and one of the things that was mentioned about Hartford, not by me, but by another mayor and area communities, like, you know what? We don't even have a development committee. We don't even have enough people to get together to talk about how we want the community to grow. And he said, and then you guys over there, you have an active development foundation. He said, you got a chamber that's like doing things. He's like, they're, they're trying to get people to spend more money in town and do things in town. And he had noticed the Discover Hartford campaign that was going on, how impacted the whole hell was for all those businesses. So, um, I think it's not just people here in town that are noticing a lot of that. It's, it's the area communities that are starting to perk up and notice what's happening.
I think it's good to, good, because it creates competition. So it helps them become more invigorated as well, when they see somebody else working. And so we have a Makita meetings that we want to talk, we go around the table and we talk about what we're doing. We have a little to brag, and each, each month is a little bit more bragging than the previous month. We all would be the best community in any other town, ones up here anyways. Well, thank you for your time and your commitment to development. That's my twenty eighteen review. And I also want to hand out my twenty nineteen prospect view to, for your consideration. Just you have a paper copy of the, they're all codenamed. And, uh, there's more, much more growth on the way for our community. It's gonna take planning and cooperation and communication to make these things happen smoothly.
Do you name these projects like alphabetically, like storms or?
No, I, I just kind of look around my office.
Project tacos. It's a project name, so.
He knows what that one might be.
Looking for project burritos next year.
And, uh, two things for your consideration. One is our development foundation has asked me to mention that they had some concerns with the Western Avenue project and that it needed to be, in the future, they feel strongly it needs to be considered about immediately and having it put together just in case something would happen to that intersection. That's a big concern there is right now.
Sure, if somebody else hits the bridge.
Yeah, yeah. And then also in here is my request, we, we put this in our budget for development foundation that interned for twenty nineteen. Uh, the, the funds were in the budget request and approved. And so we, we have enough for this person to do, but going forward, there's some discussions about, is the city okay with us putting this person on a table in City Hall to work with? Me and then also if they are allowed to access the internet. I have two questions that we'll have for you. At the point the next meeting, your consideration.
Thank you for that.
Great.
Questions, Jesse?
I got a question.
Yeah.
I was just talking about rebranding the development corporation and the chamber and DBAs and all this other. Has there been any discussion about rebranding being on the edge of everything?
You know, that's a, a city logo and a city, uh, saying, we don't use it on any of our materials for the development foundation or the chamber. However, we would definitely support a change. That was maybe, that was to be considered.
Actually, the history lesson on that is that it was developed from the Hartford area, Chamber Con, I'm sorry, Area Development Corporation, twelve years ago, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I know, I know the history.
You know, the history, well, maybe needs that. And so obviously it was carryover and, and brought in, obviously it's stuck and now we're stuck with that. Although I still like on the edge of everything, but that's off the record, even though I said it publicly. On the camera. No one else likes it, but I do.
Maybe if, if, you know, if you feel like we should take a look at it, I think that's, that's our core.
I, I was just curious. You know, I, I know that's not the chamber and the HABC's focus is what the quote-unquote cities, uh, catchphrase is. But like Scott said, that's how it was originated. Originated out of the HABC.
Right. I think you'd want to form a committee to explore branding options and tap, you know, slang, those little sayings.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious, spend what he's talking about.
We're, we're talking about it, but it's one of those things where you have ten priority items for the city to consider. And we, if we can go ahead and rebrand and just use our own images for our own materials, it's a, it's a fix for now.
Yeah, but maybe we could, you know, incorporate, uh, what's, what's the word Scott makes in, I believe you like the word too, synergy. We could use some synergy and brand all three, you know, so it seems like it makes sense.
And that's why we use. And that's why you see a very similar, there's a very similar core scheme here. Rebrand always.
I, I, I think the city logos will allow me out now. You know, we're looking like the, uh, we're looking like the old U car now. Yeah, it's not doing it for you. It didn't do, do anything for me then. It's really not doing anything for me now.
And ten years from now, you have to do it again. When you do a rebrand, you have to stick with it.
Something you want on the, on the agenda for next month?
We might talk about that in eighteen maybe.
I think the Hartford area, uh, development foundation is a good move because when you search Hartford area development corporation, uh, more predominant than us is Hartford and Wisconsin.
Or Connecticut with that.
Just got a question.
Yeah, this goes to, there's also a sheet in here about my twenty nineteen goals I'll be working towards as I stand right now. That was asked by Councilman Keel a while back and supplying for you.
I like your goals and everything and then I'm spot on with you a hundred percent. Uh, when you, you know, wrote some of these down, um, you know, did you kind of have a, uh, term in mind? I mean, uh, obviously you don't expect all of this in the next year.
What? Why not?
Well, uh, the annexation of, uh, the Brower addition would be a, a big hurdle to do in one year.
No, this is a long, more of a long-term.
I figure.
Strategy.
But I, I do like everything from the public art to that and, uh, just to, for point of clarification, um, because there's been six different directions. Secure land, uh, next to industrial park east of the, uh, Swenson Park. Now, once again, I, I asked the same question I did about a month ago. Are we talking about winter steam land here or not?
Land surrounding that area.
Okay.
Would be on my, would be my focus.
All right, thank you. And it's a good focus.
Jesse, one thing I took away from your presentation was the, um, the statistics. Those numbers, if you could share those with us in your reports monthly? The one that stuck out, stood out to me was the brewery and it was in the Makita Lakita newsletter. And I want to say there were fifteen thousand hits on Mary Link in reference to that brewery. Um, that was for the video, I believe, or the ribbon cutting, it was, you know, I don't remember the numbers, but. There's over like eighteen thousand touches regarding that story just off of Makita Lakita stuff.
Oh, it's really interesting to see, I mean, I, I'll show you at a different time, but that's been our, even if you look at. Shoot, there's, uh, we still have people looking at the story on our Chamber website. Still one of our top ten hits of the week because of brewery.
And that's the racetrack too, those are, those are big numbers.
And that is, both of those things, getting people from the outside to come spend money in town is enormous. You know, just not even just having our people spend money in town, but getting outside. The racetrack, I think it's going, people have been starved for racing for years now. So it couldn't have played out better for, for us. Finding ways to support that and make sure that we're capitalizing on that. And finding ways to support that and make sure that we're capitalizing on that, it's gonna be a good thing.
Absolutely.
I know this is Lyle Howey question, but are you able to expand on, on anything at all, uh, as far as the racetrack goes?
What do you mean exactly?
Well, because he's the owner, right?
Yeah, yeah, wha- wha- what ideas we wanna expand on?
Uh, I mean, is, is there, uh, gonna be renovations, is the track okay?
Yes, we're working on renovating the bleachers, I mean, if you have any plans on Saturday, you can grab your wrench set and go up to the Speedway to help them remove the old bleachers. They put a Facebook post out yesterday, asking for volunteers to come out and help remove all the, uh, old bleachers and tons of engagements on the Facebook post. So they'll be replacing the bleachers and, uh, with the newer and safer models.
And ironically, that's the first thing, again, my old bleachers were-
Yeah.
An accident waiting to happen, because I saw it many times.
There, there's a long-term improvements they're planning for.
Cool.
Everybody's, is everybody up to speed on how that all played out?
Yep.
I am.
Cause it- Well, I mean, to make a long story short, Lyle Howie went to work for, uh, Badlands Motor Speedway, decided no compete. And then that guy took his toys and left, closed the track, the track sat empty for so long that they lost their conditional use permit. He tried to auction the land, they didn't get high enough, dead. And if you wanna race a car, so I assume the, the no compete is up. If you wanna race a car on dirt, you either have to go to Madison, Rock Valley, Jefferson, South Dakota.
Jackson.
I don't think Madison anymore.
Madison's closed.
Madison's worth a shot. But I mean, honestly, in, in the Sioux Falls area, I ninety's the only game in town. And everybody that raced at Badlands or Houston prior to that, everybody wants to stay close. Cause you don't wanna drag your race car any further than you have to.
I was at the press conference on Tuesday last week, and there was racers there, and there's some folks that are very passionate about that fact, not having to drive to Sioux Center.
It was kinda mediocre, I would say, I think they raced, uh, they raced two nights a week. Front wheel drive cars on one night and the-
They used to, they quit that at the end.
But I, I think it's gonna be a totally different animal in two thousand nineteen.
Oh, yeah.
Totally different animal.
Saturday nights.
So, I love it for them.
Me too.
So. It'd be good for Hartford.
It'd be good for Hartford.
Even if everybody messes it up, we should be able to, some sales tax off it. Even if it's, even if everybody's asleep at the wheel, we should be able to get something off of it.
Alright, we're gonna move on, um, unless, anything else pertinent, if you wanna move on to new business? First item we got up is to review and approve the agreement between the city and Hartford and Kelly Point Partners. This was that piece that was drawn up, um, there for, I'm gonna say what?
Right. And so Larry dropped a disagreement, remember a month ago John Jordan came in and asked that the city would cooperate or participate with moving some of the land that's in our restricted deed area down by his development? Um, so he could do some, um, better grading on the lots he has to the south and the west of there. So basically, that's what this agreement says, that we will, our, what the city will do is work with the core and our engineers to take on that cost of getting that, um, layer, area shifted, you know, and take out some of it and add some of it. And then what Kelly Point Partners will do is they will go in at their expense and cost and do all the grading work that needs to be done to have proper drainage through there, so, so just let that in motion.
Any questions or motions?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Does John, has Kelly Point seen it, everything there?
Yeah, Emma and Cindy Mon and both, the, the partners in this have reviewed it, put their input, and are good with it.
Alright, if there's no more discussion, we'll vote. Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Alright, next up, we have two thousand eighteen annual report from Gage and Hunter. On the first one. Do you agree with your report?
At the last meeting, we approved them to do our audit for two thousand eighteen. This would then be approval for them to do our annual report, which is the financials that we need to send into the legislature.
Make the motion to approve two thousand eighteen annual report of Gage and Hunter.
Second.
Alright, discussion? Alright, we'll vote. Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Make the motion to approve the two thousand nineteen annual trouble service contract.
Second.
Discussion?
There's nobody really else that knows that in there, is there?
No, we're kinda stuck, you know, for a while we had the second chance in there, we could kinda compare them, but kinda the only game in town, you know?
So, so the, uh, the one thing that they underlined here was, uh, the calling in of the citizens and suddenly we're charged. Uh, just break that down for me one more time on, on how that is going to be resolved.
So basically, and we've always had a policy with Humane Society that, you know, if any issues happen Monday through Friday, eight to five, you know, they should, uh, call City Hall, have us confirm it and have us okay for them to come out, because the city's paying those charges, all the trip charges for them to come out and either quarantine an animal or whatever it may be. Um, and then in the after hours, Metro Communications will do it. Well, it was all going pretty good, but the last couple of years, we've had a few issues with citizens would call in directly there. They would forget to call us or Metro's and, you know, they call in with, a lot of it's mostly animals running at large. And it's an animal that they saw a half hour ago, six blocks away, and by the time Humane Society comes out here, I mean, it's long gone, but we're still paying their trip charge to come out here. So, you know, we won't okay unless there's an animal contained or whatnot. So it kinda controls some of that cost, so either we've got to okay it, or if it's after hours, Metro Communication has to.
Okay, so I'm confused, I mean, so it's after hours or a weekend, okay? What's the check and balance there?
So if it's after hours or the weekend, Metro Communications, if they get a call in from a citizen and they think it's a viable, you know, they've got the animal contained or whatever, they'll call the Humane Society and dispatch them out. It won't be just the, you wouldn't be able to just call in and say, hey, I want you to come out, you're not paying the charge, Scott.
Well, could that call Metro before, in the exact, the exact same circumstance, on a weekend?
Right.
Okay, and, and, uh, and it was valid and actually I had, I had a dog in my garage.
We definitely wanted to come out and-
But what's the criteria, okay, so I, like you said, I saw a dog a half an hour ago run by my house, don't know where it's at now. I mean, is Metro gonna make the call on whether that's a valid response or not?
Metro's gonna ask, was the dog contained and when did you last see it? And, you know, if we have no idea where this dog's at, well, Metro probably do is send an officer out first, one of them, and-
You're gonna have twenty-four seven pretty soon, so that officer will be around, so. Dispatch that officer to go look for that dog.
And if they see an animal and they need to call in animal control, they will.
So the protocol will, they'll call whoever's in the neighborhood, whichever deputies in the neighborhood, and then we can verify it and then with this, okay, cool, I like that.
Metro will either verify it or wait, well, so.
Okay.
Sounds good, alright, we got a motion and a second, you got a bit of questions? Alright, we'll vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Alright, next up, correspondence, we had two thank you letters. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that section, oh, we gotta get that in there, huh? Review and approve the two thousand nineteen fire protection association, please, one. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
This is similar, this hasn't changed since last year.
Yeah, does dates have changed, that thing really?
I'm gonna vote, Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Alan, correspondence, we had two items submitted for thank yous. Um, Nelson, I'll let you cover what yours is, we did kinda circulate them around first, like, and treasure ready.
Yes, hometown Christmas, uh, just, uh, God, well done, and, uh, I thought they organized things pretty well this year. Can I leave that, we can send to, I don't know, uh, I suppose, we send it to HBC and the attention, Lisa, I suppose. I don't know, I mean, I've been, she's the chair, or co-chair, or Sherry, one of the two, it'll get to where it needs to go.
Alright, Tricia, you had a thank you for the city's Sioux Falls.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be nice to send out a thank you for the free dump passes that we get every year. I mean, they give us five hundred passes free of charge, and they've been doing it now, this is the third year, so I wanted to send a thank you out to them, so hopefully they'll keep doing it.
Where'd we end up this year, how many allocated?
It was three hundred and some, I don't remember.
Spies not more.
Seems to be going up every year, I, I think, I think we get more people, the word's finally getting out, hey, you can come to City Hall and get a dump pass, first year was kinda slow, but it, it seems like people are, no, this year now, no.
Well, how many residences do we actually have in Hartford? Not, 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 uh, residences, not residents.
Right, for like households?
Yes.
We got about eleven, or one thousand fifty meters in some of those businesses.
So we're about twenty-five percent of our households are utilizing, uh, one hundred.
As of the first of August two thousand seventeen, there were nine hundred and forty single homes in Hartford, South Dakota.
Bam, facts are friendly.
Save that one, just so you would ask that question.
Give me that one again?
There were nine hundred and, nine hundred and forty single homes in Hartford, South Dakota on the first of August two thousand seventeen. Now, I haven't had an update.
There's a few more now.
So, I know that, so someone go ahead, I've saved this since August first two thousand seventeen, because people ask me that question quite a bit. So, if I get an update on it, well, census is coming up, right, so we'll get that.
Alright, anything else for correspondence? Yep, otherwise we need to go into executive session for legal and personnel.
Second.
Monahan, and a second for Keel. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Larry, you're sticking around, Jesse, you're sticking around.
Sounds good.
Alright, I make a motion to, uh, transfer eighteen acres of the Swenson addition to the HADC for economic purpose, economic development purposes.
Second.
Got a motion, second? Discussion? I'm gonna vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to vote. You're not?
Give it to her.
Yeah, let me have one.
Oh, give it to, okay.
Alright, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to vote. You're not?
I'd like to make a motion that we extended an employment offer to candidate for for our sports and rec director position at, uh, salary of eighteen fifty an hour.
Second.
Discussion? We'll vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones? Yes.
I'll make a motion that we allocate, uh, budget for this position for incidentals, uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion? Vote, Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, fellow councilmen.
Thank you.
Hi, any votes?